Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 1st Board of Selectmen's Meeting. With that, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, Steph, I would like to say the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. We have, we have kind of a full audience this evening, but I don't think anyone's here for citizens input, right? Anything come in online? All right, great. So with that, we will roll right into Normandy Farms. And I know you guys, you're all here, right? You're ready to go if you don't mind just coming up to the table. If you can each just make sure that you sit in front of a microphone and then just introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about your event. I think we have, although we may not have met you before, maybe it was over Zoom last year, we have seen this event before.
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm Sharon Beaumont, the Recreation Director at Normandy Farms. I've been there 11 years. And this will be my fifth year of doing food truck festivals. We started in 2017. We typically have five to eight food truck fest come in. And usually we have what's called like a beer truck. So it comes in in a big, like a a trailer and it has these spickets on the outside. That comes from the Colonial Beverage Company out of Dartmouth. And then last year was our first year of having Brew Fest. We had one Brew Fest. I had five different breweries from the area come in and people got, we ID'd them and then they got wristbands. Once they got the wristband, they got, they bought tickets. Then they went to each different brewery and they either got like a three ounce pour or they could get a 12 ounce cup. And we have live music at the same time and a jumpy house for the kids. And we put it right out in front of our Recreation Lodge last year. This year, we're planning on going to the back of the park where we just renovated back there. So this year I have seven food trucks and four Brew Fests planned for this year.
Okay, good. So it's going on to Safari 4 rather than
Safari 4, correct. Yes.
All right. And I think we've seen this before. We know you're, you know, you're going to store your alcohol. I saw you're going to put it in the, in the store to store it.
Yes, in the walk-in cooler.
They did add an extra day, so they're going to bring in the alcohol a day before. So I asked that this week. So that's how it ended up going from 11 to 22 applications because they do need an application for every day it's on site.
Right. I did have one question. So in, in the past, we only got a one-day liquor license and that was because the truck gets delivered with the beer in it, other than the Brew Fest. So it comes contained in that truck. And the problem is, is I could not get the trucks to deliver on a Saturday because of union. So they would have to come the night before. And they typically came around three or four o'clock and plugged into our electricity, all locked up, and we left it there till the next day. So that's why in the past, we did not have the two-day.
Yeah, so it just, it costs you another $50 the day on the fee.
Right.
But I don't have any concerns as long as they have that covered on the second day. And then there's so many you can only have for the year. I think, what is it, 50?
Uh, thirty.
Thirty? So just the, the extra day kind of eats into it as you're planning, just so you know. The number of one-day licenses that you can have for the course of the year.
Thirty, okay.
Any, any other questions? I saw the tip certification here. The application looks pretty complete.
Yeah.
We have eight certified right now and we'll have 12 completely tip certified by the first week in April. We just have a few college kids who are doing the college stuff that we're going to have take to class when they get back.
And the public cannot come in. This is just for campers.
This is all private, correct.
I don't have any other questions, yes?
And you're there every, every, every day of the event?
I'm there from the start to the end. Long day. Yes.
Any questions?
No.
Steph?
Nope, this seems like it's a no-brainer.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like a fun event, so.
It is. You're welcome to come in. I can get you a pass.
You heard it here.
Yeah, right? So with that, I think we're ready for a motion. It's kind of a long motion, so bear with us while we read it all.
You want to do one and then pause?
Yeah, let's do two, two separate motions, please.
Motion to approve eight one-day beer and wine licenses for Normandy Farms Campground LLC doing businesses. Normandy Farms Campground for Brew Fest events on April 8th and April, and April 9th, June 3rd and June 4th, June 24th and June 25th, and September 30th and October 1st, all 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Motion to approve 14 one-day beer and wine licenses for Normandy Farms Campground LLC. DBA Normandy Farms Campground for Food Truck Festival events on April 22nd and 23rd, April 29th and 30th, May 20th and 21st, July 5th and 6th, August 9th and 10th, September 16th and 17th, and November 14th and 15th, all 2022.
Any further discussion? Oh, sorry, jumping the gun there. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much. Good to see you guys.
Good to see you.
All right.
Have some luck to you. Great to see you. All right.
Have a good night. So I know we're running a little bit ahead of schedule, but are you ready or is anyone else coming to join you? Is it? Okay, then we'll take you early and get you out of here early. If you want to just come up to the table, just let, say your name and then tell a little bit about your event. We have seen this in the past, so just if anything has changed, maybe you can kind of focus there.
Okay. My name is Sammy Robertson and I'm representing Bailey's Team for Autism and we're hosting our ninth event, our seventh in Foxborough. It's a race, a 5K. And we were holding it the same as a diabetes route that Richie Noonan used to facilitate, starting at Schneider Electric. And as a result of the, the future plan of those facilities, we had to move our starting point to Payson Road Recreation Area. And we have approval from the Park and Rec folks and we are actually going onsite Friday morning to look at that for our registration and everything else, including a safety plan is in the application. So what else can I tell you?
I don't have any questions. The insurance certificate came up. She has that. It's going to be here before the race. We all know that. That's the only thing that I asked about just ahead of the meeting.
Yeah, just to let you know, I just, we had a new person certify the route since it changed slightly and I just got that number like two days ago. So I just have to go online and do the application with, using that number to get the certificate of insurance. I believe the required amount is like three, whatever it is, $3 million. It's always, it'll be the same as it's always been, as this is our seventh time here.
All right, it's a great event. I don't have any questions. Does the board have any questions?
I just have a comment.
Yeah?
I actually helped a couple of years. Tommy Buckley had reached out and I mean, you guys all know I have a child with autism, so. And I know Sammy will never toot her own horn, but, and I know she's been behind you before you guys for so many years, but I'd just like to publicly say what an incredible job this event is and what an incredible job she does for children and families who, who suffer from autism. So I just wanted to throw that publicly out there. Not that you need to meet you. I think everybody that's been around you knows, but it was a pleasure for me to be able to say that to you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
No post-run beers, nothing?
Um, at Conrad's.
Oh, there you go.
I didn't really need a permit for that. They do.
Good call. Appreciate the business.
Yes, there will be an after-party at Conrad's. You are all welcome to join.
On the steak tips.
I know that, my favorite. I have.
All right, so I think we're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve the public event application for Bailey's Team for Autism, Ninth Annual Run for Autism on March 27th, starting at 8:30 AM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much and good luck with your event. That's it.
I hope to see you all there. I will be looking for you.
Okay.
Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. You too.
Bye, Steph. Bye, Sammy.
All right, so up next, we have a change of manager for Trader Joe's and we have Brian on. Brian, are you being joined by anyone else or will it just be you?
I'm unsure. I guess it's just me.
Okay, do you want us to wait or do you want us to move forward?
Uh, we can move forward.
Okay.
Unless you need the legal counsel.
Uh, no, we're, we're all set to move forward as long as you are. It's not a public hearing or anything, so we can take it. We can take it a little bit early if you're ready. And these are usually pretty, pretty cut and dry. So with that, you just got to, to see the other two people go, so kind of same deal. If you can tell us your name and a little bit about your change of manager application in front of us this evening.
Yeah, my name is Brian Fahy. I've been with Trader Joe's for 18 years. The last eight have been in Hyannis, where the last five years I've been the manager of record with the liquor license. And several years ago, about 10 years ago, I was the manager of record for two years in Cambridge. Never any violations, never any trouble. I hold my crew very accountable and we, we're, I just got transferred there three or four weeks ago. Excited to be here.
Well, it certainly sounds like you have some experience with Trader Joe's and have your name on the liquor license, so I don't have any questions. Does the rest of the board have any questions?
So Cambridge did have a liquor, had beer and wine?
Yes, Memorial Drive, it used to, uh, back when I was there.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks.
All right, so with that, I think we're, we're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve a change of manager for LLH LLC, DBA Trader Joe's, number 528, from William Walls to Brian Fahy.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, so you're approved. Welcome to Foxborough.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, so we are flying. I see Betsy and Matt. Are you guys ready to, to go ahead of schedule as well? Okay. All right, so we're here this evening for Matt's Health Department update, the regular update. And then while we have him here, we also have the intermunicipal agreement. So if you want to go through your department update, then you know, you can just go, go right into the second piece as well.
I think it'll segment pretty nicely.
Okay, great.
Um, I can't believe it's been a year since my last update. Time goes by so quick. Matthew Brennan, Director of Public Health for the Town of Foxborough. I do have a small PowerPoint presentation just to kind of show you guys what we've been doing and who we are and.
Actually, if you go, I think you pointed to the back. There you go.
There we go. So we've changed a little bit. You know, I'm Matthew Brennan, the director. Diane and Kevin still work for the department. But now we have Cameron Shamy as a health inspector. He replaced John Robertson this year. So we've changed a little bit. Where, where the change in, in position is, has been challenging. But you know, he's getting the new role really well and, and he's coming up as a good health inspector. This year, 2021, you know, I'd like to kind of draw attention to, this is what we do on, on a yearly basis. We have a lot of different inspections. Most, what we do, food inspections, as you can see, if you add Gillette Stadium into the numbers, we have about 276 food establishments that we try to inspect every year. And that, that does include the stadium. Food establishment inspections that we did, 291 inspections throughout the year. Also, what we do, if, if you look, Title V inspections, 540. So you know, we have a lot of Title V. We have a lot of food, which keeps us busy on the day-to-day. And then, you know, with COVID and everything else on a daily basis.
Matt, can you just give me the two-second version of a Title V inspection, what that entails?
So there is no two seconds. No two seconds. You asked. So for, for a septic, it, it's in parts. So septic comes, we'll get an application. We have to do a plan review. So we have to review the plan, make sure it meets spec, to the code. Then we begin the process by doing a sort of a site walkthrough and inspection. We do a, a soil evaluation, which is basically a test hole. We take a look at groundwater levels, soil horizons. We're out there with the engineer. They submit the final plan to us and we go over it. And then, once we approve their plan, then we do inspections at the site and to make sure they're building it pursuant to how we approved it. And then we do that through the process. We'll see them backfill it and then in the end, we'll sign off on it. So.
So there's 540 new?
Sometimes one, one system could be three different inspections.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
And another thing, and this will come into play when we talk more about the IMA, but housing inspections, housing inspections sometimes are the more complicated inspections for us to do. And they take the most re-inspections, as well as somewhere where we could look to improve. The town has a lot of hotels, motels and, that we could get into more, that we probably don't spend the time that we could. And that's kind of a number that, you know, hopefully with this grant coming along, that we can improve those numbers. But we'll get into that more.
Whose milk are you pasteurizing?
So that is Lawson Farms on North Street. So yes, they have a milk pasteurization.
Can you just go back to the food truck too? That's not ones that are, that's just any food truck from any town that comes into town. Is that what that means?
Absolutely. So, yep, so just like, um, Normandy Farms came in, they have food trucks. If a food truck comes into town, we'll, you know, we'll meet them and we'll, we'll go over their, you know, their license and we'll permit them in the town. Some highlights for the year. One thing that we tried to do this year is try to get information about COVID out there. So we started the dashboard. It, it was a way to provide up-to-date information to, for the town with the most recent public health data. It's updated by us through an Excel spreadsheet or Google Docs and then it's automatically uploaded onto the website. So it's, it's great and it's a way, I think, you know, with COVID-19, that's the new way. It's something that we didn't have to do before, but now we need a mechanism like this to get that health data out to the public quickly. So, you know, we started it and I, you know, I believe it's been a success. And looking forward to doing more of that in the future, whether it be through the company that we, we use now or even maybe through an upgrade to the town software or, you know, a software system that we can do it ourselves internally. Also this year, I received a Community Health Network Alliance Grant or CHINA funding for $5,000, which we were able to give to the Hockamock Area YMCA. Basically, that grant was able to provide some food to people that lived in the Foxborough Housing Authority property. So we gave that money directly to the YMCA to provide services to the residents here and to help them out through COVID-19, which was a great opportunity for us. And I'm thankful that we were able to do it. Also, this year, I don't know if, and anyone got to look at the February 7th Board of Health meeting? But if, if you didn't, I recommend you take a look. We had the Advanced Public Health Volunteer Corps come and they performed a health assessment. And they gave us a lot of good information regarding the town of Foxborough and in areas where we could do better, in areas, some of the things that they said, you know, Foxborough lacks preventive care and people could go out to doctors' offices more. We're high in pediatric asthma and throughout the town. And some of the leading causes of death, heart disease, total cancer, lung cancer, female breast cancer are elevated throughout this area. So a lot of good information, a lot of information that we can take to try to make the town a better place. So if you haven't seen it, I definitely suggest that, that you take a look. And I'm sure some more discussions will come out of it later. Also, with some COVID-19 emergency funds, we provided some COVID-19 at-home test kits to the Council on Aging. So we provided those to the Council on Aging. They were selling them at cost. That way, the money could go into a fund. That way, we could purchase more once they're depleted. So we were able to do that during the Omicron surge. So I'm, I'm glad and I believe they're still available at the Council on Aging if anyone is interested in getting them. Now here's the Public Health Excellence Grant. So the Public Health Excellence Grant is something that we received last year. The grant supports cross-jurisdictional sharing of public health services between the towns of Foxborough Eastern, Mansfield, Norton, Plainville, and Sharon. So in working together, you know, it's hope, DPH hopes that we'll be able to improve public health services within these municipalities. So it's really looking to expand the opportunity of, of, you know, a collaborative of municipalities to work together and to make them better. Right now, potentially, we could see this grant of up to $300,000 to the town until 2033. It's not definite, but you know, it's, it's up to $300,000 towards public health services that we're excited to be able to get and to host. So in order to really move forward with the grant, all of these municipalities has worked with our town managers, thank you Bill, very much, and solicitors and council, to really kind of come up with this intermunicipal agreement. Basically, what it does is it creates a partnership, the Bristol Norfolk Public Health Partners, which is a collaborative between all these towns. It creates an advisory board to oversee the distribution of all the funds. Basically, you know, it's most likely going to be the health agents for each town, but it doesn't have to be. The Board of Health has independence to, to appoint whoever they want to, to oversee the funds for their municipality. What we asked for as agents, because as you saw, where there was most need, we asked for a food inspector position, completely funded through the grant. Also, we asked for a shared service housing inspector because some, the towns feel that we could do better in that area and they're the more lengthy, complicated cases that we get into. So the towns also believe that that was needed between all of us. Also, in that time, the town of Mansfield requested an epidemiologist through another funding source, the Bureau of Infectious Disease and Laboratory Science. So the town of Mansfield received a grant to support contact tracing efforts, which are now performed through the Foxborough Fire Department. All expenses for employment will be paid through the grant funds, with the exception of any unemployment insurance or any funds that we're unaware of that kind of come up out of this. We agreed to share them equally amongst the towns. The town can withdraw at this, from this agreement at any time with the vote of the Select Board or the Board of Health. And just for being the entity, the lead entity, we get 15, we're entitled to 15% of the funds. So 15% of the funds come in to the town of Foxborough to help us run the grant for whatever we need to, you know, for the health department purposes. Select Boards and Boards of Health in Sharon and Plainville have already signed the agreement and as well as I have Betsy Aloe from our Board of Health here, who they have signed last night. So they were in support of that. And if Betsy wants to say anything, she can. And I do, if you'd like, I do have the agreement handy on the slides if anyone has any specific questions about it or would like to go into it further.
Does the board have any questions on this presentation or the intermunicipal agreement?
I guess just one. So, so this, these positions will be shared by all these towns? And I know it spoke about the, the pay, the employment. Will these people be benefited? And if they are benefited, who, will that be shared by all the towns as well? Is that how, is that how that would work?
So it's, it's a grant position and the benefits, you know, what we pay off the top is in that grant money. So, you know, we have to, we accounted for the salary and we accounted for whatever we need to pay for benefits within that fund. So we have up to $300,000 that we'll pay for those positions. And then anything after that, you know, it would be subject to the IMA agreement.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I would, I would guess if you guys find that, you know, it's, it's been a great move, then you'll, you know, at some point you'll, you'll want to keep those positions on. And I was just wondering how that works when you have
And Mike would know.
multiple communities, like, you know, whose insurance is, you know, I don't, every, I'm sure every municipality could have different insurance plans. So who will pick up the insurance or which town? Would it be us because we're the lead, lead town in the?
It is actually, there's an indemnification in here. So like if, if the employee was working for another municipality at that time and doing inspection there, you know, they would work, they would be working in part for them. And then there's, there's a hold harmless agreement in here as well to hold, you know, municipalities harmless if something happens. In the case, something happens in another town. It also asks for a $3 million policy and, and other things. So it is covered in here quite a bit. Having six or seven different lawyers go over it, it's, yeah.
You, I think you were going to chime in, Mike.
Sure. So these, the benefits are paid through the Town of Foxborough or managed through the Town of Foxborough, but paid by the grant. These are non-union positions and everything is shared equally by, by the towns. Matt and the, and the Town of Foxborough would do the advertising and, and hiring. But the, the final selection would be, you know, shared, you know, by the, you know, by the number of town, five or six towns that are participating in it. So basically, with a manager vote, we're not bearing the cost. Either during this process or later, as Matt mentioned, should there be an unemployment or something like that, that's all shared through those, through that grant.
Yeah, and after the grant's over, then I guess there'd be, like, like I know you said, towns can opt out. So at that point, if towns want to continue, then there'd be some type of, you know, agreement on how, how to pay forward after the grant money's gone.
So conceivably, there'd be a situation where you would, all remaining towns that want to participate could then raise the funds. And then it would be a funding source that would be likely go through the Board of Health. So they, then it would be created, and that, that funding source would then go into like a, a special fund for all, all committees that are applying for it. So it's, it's a marginal cost when you think of it that way and it's, and it's not till 10 years from now. So, which is even better because they don't have to worry about that until then. But I think that you're going to find that the need for those positions is going to be something that they felt they probably should have had a while ago and that this is going to be helpful to all of them. And it's, again, this is just another good example of regionalization, how we can better serve the communities by working together on these things. And I think this particular region in, in total has done a great job of that. So.
And that $300,000 re-kicks, that, that's, well, up to $300,000.
Up to $300,000, every year.
Every year, yeah.
And, you know, Mansfield has already gone ahead and got the epidemiologists. And, you know, we're, as part of this, you know, we're encouraging all the partner municipalities to, you know, if you can go get another grant and then we can add it to this very easily. And I guess that's the way, and I'm not a lawyer, but I guess that's the way it was designed, where we can just, you know, add an addendum here and, you know, we're good to go for these next funds. And then when things, if the grant ends, the agreement ends. So we're only tied into this as far as the grant monies. And if we decide further that we like this and it's, we want to keep this going, then, you know, we can look at amending this, but, you know, this is only for grant funds. That's it. At the time being.
And we get a piece, an extra piece for being 15% for, yeah.
Well, I mean, that, that's a nice way. Maybe every town, you know, doesn't need each one of those positions. So, so like, like you said, Bill, it's a nice way to utilize services and shared services.
And it's a hard position to hire for, especially if it's part-time. So I think even from a recruitment perspective, I think regionalizing it, from what I've heard, will be beneficial as well.
And DPH has told us that when money is available to us in the future, it's going to be available to coalitions like this, more so than a single municipality. And we've already seen that in a short amount of time, that everything DPH puts out, they want it to be within one of these shared service collaboratives. So hopefully by starting this early and get, we'll be in a good place for the future to be, to be able to get other sort of. to be, uh, to be able to get other sort of grants for the town.
Yep, and, and, uh, the Board of Health voted last night, they're all in favor of it, I happened to talk to Paul today, he mentioned the same thing, so it has the full support of the Board of Health as well.
So, so the reason why the Board of Selectmen have to vote is because it's an intermunicipal agreement, which is the, you're the only board that can actually do that.
Any other questions?
So this is incremental service that we're looking to fund, right? This is on top of health services provided right now?
That's correct. So this is a way to bolster what we currently have. We can't take away what we currently do, then they, DPH would frown on, upon that, and they would probably take away the grant funds. Um, this is a way to improve what we're already providing.
Supplemental funding.
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, work being done is, um, I don't want to, epidemiology and that
Food, so there would be a food inspector, a housing inspector, and an epidemiologist right now, yes.
Okay. By the state for ten years.
Yes, and we're, we're also looking at other things. If we wanted to hire someone to administratively to help with the grant, we could do that. And we're looking at software systems to help these employees to do, you know, be able to work in all the communities and just have the same software and, you know, be able to work remotely. So it's going to fund o- other things as well, at least that's the hope. But, you know, we feel like it's a really good opportunity.
Coming off of a couple of years where you guys are probably strapped by everything else too, I imagine.
Exactly.
You know, it'll be good to get some of the focus back onto some of this, like, bread and butter things, type of stuff that the Board of Health.
That we used to do.
Yeah, used to do before, you're a little distracted by COVID.
I just want to say too, that, you know, Matt's been a great addition to the staff, he's been really helpful to all of us, um, dur- during a very difficult time for all of us collectively, and, um, I think we all collectively made a good choice, so.
Thank you.
I think you'd agree with that, Betsy, too, right?
I do.
And this, um, this three hundred thousand dollar a year grant, it didn't just fall on us, Matt chased it. He did the work to write the grant, find it, and he's been working on this for quite some time, and he's done a tremendous job.
Thank you.
How were the town, oh, if, if you don't mind, Lee?
No.
How were the other towns picked? You know, how did you, okay, so now that we know you were the one that chased it, how do we get the other six towns?
We work together well. It's just, you know, it's, you get to know the people in the, the business and, and being other, uh, we, we all go to the same, uh, seminars and, and learning events, and we get to know each other. Um, and that's really how, and if you find like-minded people, um, surrounding you that want to do the same thing, it's, it's kind of how this worked out. So you have a good regional area and a bunch of people that are focused on doing something, and it just, it worked out very well.
And in this one, this happens to include our four SEMREC communities, um, which are very compatible for communities, plus Sharon, plus Plainville.
Plainville.
You know, all contiguous, and, you know, it works well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions before we take a motion?
Excuse me. Motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement with the towns of Easton, Foxborough, Mansfield, Norton, Plainville, and Sharon.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, thanks for all your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Betsy.
Yeah, of course.
Good to see you both.
All right. So we're moving right along. It's not very often, we are ahead of schedule all meeting, so let's keep it, let's keep it on track. All right, next up, we have the Board of Selectmen to discuss a potential feedback loop, three sixty review initiative. So, um, this had come up from an idea that Seth had brought up, so we'll let him speak to it a little bit. And then also, um, you know, just, maybe, Mike, if you can talk a little bit about the review process, as this was on the agenda, I kind of started thinking, we used to have software, where are we? Were we looking at something? Do we ever pick it up? Are we on paper? So I wouldn't even mind just, you know, hearing an update where we are with all that as well.
Do you want me to start with that?
Yeah, is that okay if we start there, Seth?
Of course, of course. Sure. So the, um, the review process we have now is when, when an employee comes in, they're on a six-month probationary period. Every employee gets reviewed at that six-month period, and then, um, and then we pick up evaluations, um, in, in June. So May fifteenth are self-evaluations, uh, June fifteenth are, you know, the, the managers, supervisors, their evaluations are due, um, and that's every year. So everyone from top to bottom gets evaluated, uh, in the entire organization. And as, uh, the chair had mentioned, uh, we did use to have a, a software program that, that was helpful in doing these evaluations. The, uh, debt company was, was bought out, and then they were bought out again, and we had some, um, some problems with them, so we abandoned that, and we've gone to a new program, which is Civic HR. What we've purchased is the, is the first phase of that, and that's just our applicant tracking, and that's for hiring people. And this year, we had planned on buying the second phase of that, which is the evaluation, uh, piece. We didn't do that because we're trying to stay within a tight budget. So the hope is that next year, in FY twenty-four, we will go ahead and fund that software program, so what we're doing now on paper, we move that process, you know, to, to software. So it's same, same basic evaluation process, but making it, uh, you know, more electronic and more user-friendly.
Yeah, I know, that's something I've been, when I first came here, it was online, and it was a lot easier, and then I feel like we went back in time on paper, and I know we used to pay for a tool, so I don't understand how we don't have a budget for it, when we used to have a budget when I first came on. And I know that the cost of it went up, but, I mean, even as a reviewer, it's, it's like a little bit annoying to have to, I'm sure, Doc, like last year, you have to correlate it all on paper, like, you know, usually there's kind of systems that manage all that, and, and it all kind of happens on its own, so it sounds like we will be on paper again this year.
So we actually had a bargain on the previous system, but we didn't get a bargain going forward, because the systems got more expensive. So the budget, you know, did get, um, get bitten into because of that. So I actually, Mike doesn't even know this, I'm going to, but I just wanted to let you know that we may be able to squeeze that in with some of the, uh, federal money this year to, to maybe institute this earlier. So, uh,
No one wants this more than I do.
And I just, I don't think having reviews in a drawer, who knows, like, who knows if they're done, if they're not, like, it, it's not something that I think should be done on paper, it's just my opinion.
We'll try and figure that out if we can.
So, you know, there's different, I don't know who's familiar with reviews, you know, in your professional career, I know we've had different discussions about it, but, you know, Mike talked about the self-review, and then the manager review, there's another step, which is the three sixty review, which you might have, you know, people that work in different departments give feedback, and it would look different than, than the review that a manager does, or you do for yourself. But I know, like, at my work, you know, we have to go out, or we had to at one point, go out to at least like one person or two people, and get some three sixty feedback. You know, it could be for people under them, it could be for people from different departments, it could be for people on boards and committees, um, I don't know if you had any other thoughts, but
Yeah, I mean, vendors, or
Yeah.
That type of thing, business partners, colleagues, um, and, and people who are actually, you know, boots on the ground, doing the work all around town, so, um, for the services that the town provides, so, yeah.
Yeah, so it kind of, I think, provides a more holistic picture. I think the linchpin is, is we would have to be online in order to probably execute it. I think trying to execute that on paper would really be, besides people like stuffing it in envelopes and leaving it in a box, I can't even imagine what that would look like on paper. So I think it's, I think it's a great idea, um, you know, it, it would probably have to be for the non-union, I don't know how that would work for the union. At first, we'd have to start it somewhere.
Certainly, so, um, going back several years, um, there were, there were very few employees that actually got evaluations, and that, that's something that we've spent years negotiating into contracts. So at this point, every, uh, employee in the organization, so for the town side, a hundred and seventy-seven employees, uh, get evaluated, as I mentioned, on an annual basis. To change that for union employees, we'd just have to go back to the table and, and negotiate a change, uh, to those, a new process or, or what have you. For, for non-union, um, you know, that, that's easier. You know, we, we go ahead and we bring that to the personnel board, and then, you know, bring it back here for approval on it, on that process. You know, one thing that, uh, as I, as I'd seen, uh, the three sixty evaluation on here, that might be something where you stop, where you start, actually, and Bill and I talked about this a little earlier today, that might be something that you start with your, with your top managers. You know, so, so right now, your, your two major hires and, and people that you oversee are your town manager and finance director. So maybe you start with your, your town manager, or maybe the town manager and finance director, and do that three sixty evaluation, um, before, you know, tackling the rest, just, um, a thought.
Yeah, I don't know where you were, Seth, when you thought of it, but I kind of like the idea of biting off a couple at first before, like, a, a big bang rolling out. But I mean, I think if everyone's open for it, I think it's a good suggestion, and I'm sure something we could, we still have time to probably roll out for this year.
I actually, uh, mentioned to, to Seth that I actually went through a three sixty-degree evaluation through ICMA. Uh, they required it as part of the credentialing process every five years, and so I've gone through it a couple times, and, um, and it was, it was actually in different locations. I did one in, in Dedham, I did one here, uh, several years ago, um, and then, then I hit a certain point in my career, and I say, you don't have to do it anymore, because you're, you know, you've been doing it enough times, they don't have to do it anymore, so. But actually, it was helpful to me, because it does provide different perspectives, um, and also, it can give you, uh, give you a little bit more, uh, rearview mirror, uh, of, uh, effect, where you can look at things and just say, geez, I didn't realize that was an issue, um, and maybe I can approach that differently going forward. So it, it is helpful. My only reservation is that, uh, sometimes it can be misused, and I think you have to be careful about that in the process, and identify where you see people may attempt to misuse it, you know, as almost like a weapon against someone, I get, you gotta be really careful. But I do think that, generally speaking, it can be very, very helpful, um, because again, it does offer, you see, you get seen through the lens of another person that you work with, and I think that is really, that in and of itself is very helpful.
Yeah, and I don't know that we would use those to numerically calculate the average at the end. I think we'd probably keep that with, with our reviews, would be my thought, but it would just be some extra additional feedback, you know, for, for improvement, or, you know, an extra pat on the back, or whatever it may be, you know, going forward, because I've definitely seen it go both ways, so. Any concerns, or good, anything else on that one?
So if I could just give a quick
Yeah, of course.
Thoughts real quick. So, to me, this is really about information, and it aligns with the financial trend monitoring, monitoring that we're going to touch on shortly, you know, in a little bit, just quickly, but it's about providing information to this board to help us, it can inform policy, provide information to management, um, for any improvements or, or ways of doing things better, more efficiently. And then, as far as the people who are actually providing the feedback, um, the people who work in town, um, for one, um, could appreciate the, um, opportunity to, to provide helpful ideas, thoughts, information back to town management, so it's the three sixty, it's covering everybody, and it's really, you know, it's, we have reviews down, and this is information flowing back up. So that's really, um, what I had in mind when I was, when I was thinking about this stuff, so that was just my thoughts, quickly.
Yep. So I think it sounds like everyone's on board with, you know, moving this forward, at least for town manager and finance director.
I mean, in all honesty, I have no idea what this is, you know, I'm not corporate America, I have no idea. So would you mind giving me an example of how we would three sixty bill? Who would we tap into to do a three sixty review on bill?
I'll talk about how it works at my work, you, maybe you can talk about how it works at your work, because different big companies may do it different, but, like, when I have my review, I used to have to go out, which I don't think, we didn't do it this year, we've done it in the past.
So quick question, what, what, what would your title be? What's your title?
Principal.
You're a principal in, okay.
Yep. And it doesn't matter what your title is.
Okay.
Everyone's doing this. So you'd, you'd pick three people to go out to, and it might be someone who works under you, another department manager who works maybe laterally with you, and like, like Seth said, depending where, where you sit, it could be another third person, so.
You pick them?
Yes.
Okay, so you're picking your three sixty
Yep, or the manager, yep, yep. And, and you just get some extra feedback, what have they done well, what can they, what can they improve on, usually it's some targeted questions like that, and then all that information, you know, kind of goes into the review. That's how I have, have seen it work. It hasn't been like a free-for-all, like, every single person that you touched throughout the year, give some sort of review, no.
Seventy-six reviews.
No, not, nothing like that, from, from my experience of what I've seen.
Yeah, um, similarly, it was, it's, um, a, a sampling.
Yeah.
It's not everyone in the world, but it's a sampling of people who may work in, in this department or this group, um, you know, other, sampling of other, um, people that are, you inter- have, in a plane there actually.
Like, I think for Bill, like, this is just me spitballing, like, maybe a board member, maybe a department head, and, or, or maybe two department heads, or maybe someone else in, in the office, or, you know.
Or somebody from the community, too.
From someone from the community, yeah.
You know, different
So, you know, like, those can be the different ideas of the types of people.
Wouldn't be a selectman, because we're already doing that.
No, but another board, a committee member, so think about all the boards, AdCom Works in the law, um, you know, those, those types of boards that work
And it's designed primarily to be helpful and, and, and instructive to the, to the person who's being evaluated, not to be, you know, used in a way that's, that's trying to be hurtful. It's, everybody wants to know what they can improve upon, and sometimes you don't always, it's not always readily, um, uh, visible to you as an individual, so by getting the other perspectives and how people view you, you can then understand how, the perspective that, that the world has of you.
And it's typically anonymous, I mean, you can have your name on it, but you don't have to, you know, it could be, you know, and, and a lot of times, like, you might send it out to five people, hoping you get three people, because really, people get busy, and sometimes they don't hear back, but, you know, maybe you strive to get
That's exactly the way, it was, I did, I did five, I think.
Yeah, and you try to get three back, yeah.
And does somebody else other than yourself, so is it turned in, it's turned into somebody else?
Usually it would go into HR, just like, just like our reviews.
And then you, you'll, you'll hear a collective feedback.
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
And I think the manager, I think the manager would use that, so like, let's say, for finance director, Bill would use that three sixty feedback, even in, you know, his discussion or end-of-year, you know, conversations
Mm-hmm, yeah, exactly.
With, with the finance director.
So going back, uh, is probably five or six, maybe six years ago, when Bill had his ICMA, uh, three sixty review, I was one of the people that reviewed him. And, um, and I had no idea who else or how many else, but I got this thing that came from ICMA. And, um, and I sent it back in anonymously, they didn't want names, and it was, I was like, oh, wow, that's kind of weird, evaluating my boss. But it was, the, the questions were good, and it, it actually was constructive, and I felt, you know, um, that I could be very honest, because it was, it was supposed to be feedback to improve the person.
Right.
It wasn't, you know, I wasn't going to be taking away money from him, you know, he's not going to find out, it's me, so I don't feel like I, you know, it was really, you know, I could, I could give true, honest feedback on the things he's doing great, the things he might improve on a little, and so as someone who's given one of those evaluations, it was, I felt it to be a, you know, a good tool.
This particular one was done through the University of Georgia, and they, they have a, you know, a, a division that actually works strictly on these kind of things. So they had very pointed and clear questions that were designed to try to get at some, some of the way in which you handle certain things. And I didn't even know, I didn't even know what Mike's responses were, they were just more, it was just put into the process, and then at the end of the day, they spit out a, a response that said to me, this is where you're good on this, you could use a little bit of help in this area, and this is, these are things that, uh, that, you know, you should fix. And it was, it was, it was pretty well-rounded, actually. It was, um, but, you know, it was a good report, it was helpful to me, it really was.
So is this really something for more upper to middle management? What can it be done all the way down?
You can do it, you can do it at any level.
I think we'd have to decide, but it could be like, I'm just throwing random departments, it could be, you know, someone in recreation, or the water department, or, you know, the library, or, you know, anyone could, could request three sixty maybe down the road, I think with unions, you have to, this would be a longer-term plan.
Right.
But, you know, we didn't even have reviews a couple of years ago, now we've got reviews for everyone, now we're taking it up, you know, to the next notch with professionalism as far as the, maybe the department heads or the non-union manager levels.
So the way we maybe introduce it to unions is do it strictly on a voluntary basis, you know, initially, to see if anybody wants to do it. And then, uh, and then introduce it, if, you know, you know, things work like that in that kind of a framework, the, the more success stories you have, the better it is.
Yeah.
And people will realize that it's, it's designed to be a, a tool to help you, not to, to hurt you.
So is there anyone besides you two and, and George, is there anyone that is, could go through it right now with? So is there anyone besides you two and George, is there anyone that is, could go through it right now with?
Well, we could have others as well, if, you know, we could ask others if they want to participate, you know, and just go through the process and see.
Like police and fire chief on union and their department heads.
Yeah, and they're on the contract, but you know, but, but you know, but certainly, you know, it could be done in such a way that it's just designed to be helpful. And it's not, again, not designed to be a tool to hurt people, it's strictly an input.
And actually, I know, I got one this year and it was someone I work with a lot. And we're not in the same department, we don't have the same management. But it was nice to kind of talk about what we did all year and say some of the things that went well. And then since it's not my department, you know, I had an idea of something that I thought that they could, it wasn't anything about that person, but that we could do better together and, you know, you can kind of put it in there. And it's, I think it's helpful on both sides. All right, so I don't think we need to take a vote on that or anything, more just discussion, but I think we want to move it forward. But, you know, again, we'd have to have some sort of software, I think, to really do that, so. Keep us posted where we land with the software.
Particularly if it's done in a, it's sort of done in an anonymous way, but you get, you pick the individuals, they do the analysis and they, they send it back and again, it spits out a report.
And even the one that I personally got this year, again, my company this year, we've changed a lot with the review process, but I happened to get one from a manager who just sent me an email, so it wasn't even a formal process. It was like, hey, I'm doing the evaluation for this person, I want, I know you work with them a lot, I want to hear what you, you know, what's going good, what's going bad, what can we improve? So, you know, I've even seen it done as informally as that.
Very good.
All right, so since we're talking, HR reviews are ready, the assistant town manager's update.
Already?
Yeah, right, we're really flying along.
Better get my stuff out here. So I have one recruitment to announce and I know that Bill had sent out an email to the board last week. So the library board of trustees did make unanimous decision to hire their new library director. Her name is Elizabeth, she goes by Libby O'Neil. She is currently serving as the library director in the town of Norfolk. Prior, five years prior to that, she was in Marion at the Tabor Library, also as, as the director. And many years prior to that, she had worked as a department head, but not the director, at Boston Public Library. Very well qualified, highly educated. And I, I worked through the entire process with the, with the trustees. And it was a good process and we're excited to have Libby come in and join the town. So again, this is, this is the one position that, that is not hired by the town manager, not by the board of selectmen, this is the only one that's hired by another board, it's by the board of trustees.
And is there any gap between Manny and her, or any overlap?
So Manny, Manny departed in mid-January.
Okay, while the time flew.
So the, the board of trustees, the board of trustees reviewed and appointed an internal member to be their interim director, and she's done a terrific job. And she will continue to do that up until May, March twenty-eighth, because Libby wanted to give about six weeks notice. And so the, you know, the place is running fine. And we're excited to get our new director coming, or the library's new director, because currently the interim director Kathy is doing two jobs. She's doing, you know, the job that she already had. And she's also, you know, managing the day-to-day things of running the building, she's done a terrific job. So, yeah, so Libby will be arriving the end of this month. And then I would expect two to four weeks after that, we'll have her come in with, with the library trustees or some members of the trustees to introduce her to the board and to the community.
Great. Yep?
All right, so, so just an update on the American Rescue Plan funds. We, it's, it's gonna flow a little bit into the discussions that we're gonna have at capital this weekend. Capital Committee's meeting on Saturday morning towards annual meeting to go over the capital requests. We will, it would, it will be my intention to promote the idea of using at least the local funds for help, to help supplement the capital program this year, primarily because we're trying to stay away from the use of free cash, because it's kind of limited and we want to, we want to continue to build that up if we can. The use of the county funds is still one we've been working very, very hard on with the, with the Senator Warren's office as well as Congressman Auchanclaw's office. And we've made some progress on that front, which if most of you recall that the reason why we had to do that was because the Congress, or the treasurer's office, the US Treasury's office had actually placed a limitation of ten million dollars on the entire county for use of the funds, and the best use of funds was the replacement of revenue category, which is, it gives us the most ability to do the things that we need to do locally. So a lot of us wanted to use those funds in that, under that category, but there wasn't enough capacity on that, on that one ten million dollar cap for all twenty-five communities that were gonna use it. So we've made the case to US Treasury that this is a unique situation that required unique consideration. And hopefully we'll, we'll get some relief on that. The congressman's office and the senator's office have been very, very helpful to us in trying to make the case on our behalf. I work with several members of the Norfolk County Manager Association to, to actually write letters and to, and provide documentation to them as to why we're being excluded in this area and we should be, we should be included. So it's, it's been interesting, it's a, it's a process, working with the federal government is a really slow, methodical process, but you have to go, you have to take the steps and do what you need to do to make your case. And I think we've done that in this case and hopefully they'll provide us some relief on that front. So we, we do hope that we'll have some answer on that fairly soon. I'm hoping that it'll be hopefully this month. But that said, we don't, we have until, we have until 2024 to spend the money. So it's not like we have to spend it right now. And that's the nice thing about using the federal money is that we could virtually spend it anytime. We just have to make the request through the county to get the funds and we just have to make that case. But I do think, that I think the purpose of the meeting this weekend will be to identify projects which are really worthy of funding. And then as the funding becomes available, we can then make decisions about how we want to use it. And I think that will provide us a lot more flexibility. And that doesn't require town meeting action, so that's, that's also a good, a good thing for us to have. But there are a number of cases, projects that we want to look at this weekend and they've all been enlisted. And I think Stephanie, you're the other representative in this case, so you're gonna be here this weekend to see that. But you'll be getting information from Marie Almodova as well, if you haven't received it already, about, about what we're gonna do this weekend. So that's the latest on that part of it. And otherwise, we are, you know, moving right along with our plans. A couple of things have come up, the pool project replacement, fixing the town pool is a new priority that we'd like to look at. I know that we'd like to replace both chillers at the middle school. Both chillers, yeah. They're, they're both old and need to be looked and be replaced at this point. So Billy Uchtna suggested that we look at both, both that was using the federal money to do that. It's less impacting us locally. We also want to replace several pieces of town DPW equipment, which has not been able to be funded for several years now. So we want to look at those opportunities as well. But that'll be talked about in, at the committee meeting next week, this weekend rather. And it'll be televised if anybody wants to watch it. We did allow, we did post it for you all to attend if you wanted to, entirely up to you. You can watch it on TV or you can be here if you'd like, we're gonna be here on Saturday morning starting at eight thirty.
And then the late-breaking one, I know that it, you know, CIP thing take time, but just with all the talk about the skate park, just, you know, making sure that one at least gets on a long-term plan to talk about. So it may be on there, I haven't, I, my summary sent something out, but I haven't had a chance to look at it. But that may be like a newer ad since the budget book came out.
But we can, we'll probably add, we can add that this week and at least take a look at it and see how we want to, where we want to place it, you know, for consideration.
Just one quick question too, like if, if there's work that we know needs to be done in the next few years and is it maybe the Taylor School, but it hasn't, work hasn't been approved at town meeting? That's not gonna show up, but we feel pretty confident that that work needs to be done, right? So how do we address that?
So, so we've actually had a meeting back in December, where we talked about some of the big projects that we know are on the horizon, for instance, the Taylor School. And Bill Uchtna was at that meeting and, and as was Amy Erados, and we talked about that in particular. And that was indicated to us that that's about five or six years out before we get to that point. So that's, we've got a little time.
Because of the SBA process, I think, Bill has said.
Yeah, it takes a long time to get through that process. And we may not get on the first time, first few times, actually. The second thing is, we talked about the, the community center project and why that, and what steps we should take. That's something we should probably take some further interest in, because the timing of that could work in such a way that you've got the middle school and the high school coming off in 2025, if I'm not mistaken, which would then, which would mean that, and those were debt exclusions, which this project would probably have to be a debt exclusion. But if you replace that with, with the one that's coming off, there's no impact to the community, there's no impact to the taxpayers by doing it that way. So I think that's something to consider. So that way, it's almost similar to what we did with the other projects, where we included them in the, in the, in the tax base. And then, and then do an exclusion for that. But we don't have the capacity to do it in a straight borrowing capacity right now, but, but that's another way that's less onerous to the taxpayers by doing it that way. So something to think about. So those, that's my updates for, for those items. I do have several permits that I did issue for use of town property, one was.
They're all library programs?
Yeah, several, several hyper programs. So calling dad, grandparent and all caregivers, celebrate Father's Day with the Boyd and Library by bringing your kids to a special show with the Admiral Adventures. And that's gonna be on June eighteenth from ten thirty to eleven thirty. And we have the, let's take a musical tromp through the swamp with singer guitar banjo and drum machine player Tom Seelig. And that, that is on July ninth from ten AM to eleven AM. The annual teddy bear picnic, it's gonna be held on July twenty-first. Our rain date will be July twenty-second from ten AM to noon. And the band Roly-Poly-Guacamole will play for the annual teddy bear picnic. We hope to get, have additional, have a sports mascot and a Grandies ice cream truck available as well. Yeah, so far, so good, yeah, so far, so good. That's why I'm, I'm wearing my glasses tonight, that's why. On July twenty-eighth, the rain date is July twenty-ninth, from ten AM to eleven, the sing, play, grow, dance and laugh too. Singer-songwriter, storyteller and popular children's entertainer Philip Alexander performs original songs and stories as well as traditional tunes from around the world. So that's, that should be an interesting take as well. And that's for children's ages one through ten in their, in their favorite grownups. And then from ten AM to noon on August sixth, you enjoy the Jenny and Juggler's Fabulous Variety Show, safe and fun bubble extravaganza in Jenny's exceptional full celebration support. So I want to thank Katie for putting all this stuff in. Now she managed to get it all there, but she did. And then, and on July twenty-fifth, from two PM to three PM, learn ukulele ages two, eight to twelve. Want to try an instrument that is fun and easy to play, join Julie Stepnat, Stepnat, Sapak as she shows the fundamentals of ukulele playing. You'll learn how to tune, strum and read chords. After a short lesson, you'll be able to play songs. No experience required, bring your own ukulele or borrow one of, one of others, one of yours, one of hers.
I think they need to raise the age for that.
Yeah, that's such a.
I want to do that.
I wrote that one down.
Should be a fun one, so. Those are all the upcoming things that are all being done through the, through the library in this, on the upcoming summer months. So, so take note of those, you'll, you'll see plenty more of announcements coming down the road on all those.
Yeah, imagine farmer's market, constant on the common, that should be.
Lots of, lots of things coming up.
Quite a few coming, so. All right, so we have quite a bit of meat tonight for the selectmen's update, anything else before we move into that?
Katie, did you want, is there anything you want to add to any of those? I know you just popped on for a second, or you just wanted to say hello?
No, just, just wanted to say hi and see if you had any questions. And I know Bill mentioned the teddy bear picnic, they want to bring the ice cream truck. Jess Henderson, she did submit the letter, but it was just not till yesterday. So that'll be just up for your approval next meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay, great. And they did that before, right Katie? They did that last year too, right?
They did.
Yeah, I don't think that's new.
Right. And the common's back to the old pattern, so she just, I just was like, you know, it'd be a good time just for her to come out, say hi and then promote her events. So there's nothing different from last year to this year.
All right, great. So moving to selectmen's update, we've got quite a few things. The only thing that I didn't add that we thought of after for new business, we've already mentioned. I can't believe March fifth is already this Saturday, like talk about a date sneaking up on you that, that's already around the corner. But CIP meeting, eight thirty, Steph's gonna be here to represent the board. It is on cable access and you can re-watch it on YouTube and on their, their site as well. The next item, I know we talked about the financial trend monitoring. So thank you to Bill's office who actually set up a date with John to come in June seventh. So just wanted to let everyone know that that's moving forward. It's a little bit crazy right now with, with budget season. So once there's some breathing room there, we thought it would be good to have him come in and give that presentation. So that's, that date's out there. And then annual town meeting warrant articles presentation discussion. I wanted to hear from you guys as far as what you want for presentations here. I know there was a lot of talk about it for fall town meeting, I want to make sure we're all on the same page, we're all comfortable with what we're doing. AdCom is starting their article presentations tomorrow and Bill actually asked me to join him as they present the select board article and the canvassing board. So I have to be out from seven to nine for sport pickup and drop-off. So I figured I can come in here and help talk about those. But, you know, really, it's the same presentation that we've discussed. I think the change of the, of the board is kind of, I don't know that that needs much explanation now. I think, you know, like, like we said, we're one of the, the final boards that, that have to make that change. And I think we understand now what it, what it entails. And then the canvassing one, you know, just with COVID, people didn't want people coming out to the door. And then I think we're seeing more and more scams too. At least I'm hearing about, you know, oh, I did something at your neighbor's house and I wanted to pop over. Like just if people want to opt out to having people come up to their door to sell them something, you know, the option to do that. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, the presentation for AdCom tomorrow. If anyone else wants to join, certainly feel free, it's posted. Or if anyone feels passionately they want to represent those, I'm happy to hand the torch over as well. But I'm also happy to go present them with Bill as well tomorrow. So my thought, you know, the board of selectmen sponsored articles are the ones we talked about discussing in here. You know, do we want to have one night where we talk about all those? I think the marijuana one, in my opinion, is, is the one that's going to have the biggest discussion. And I think planning board is still looking at it and need to weigh in a little bit on what that zoning looks like. And then I think we'll have to weigh in a little bit on some pieces of it as well, as we finalize that warrant article. So to me, that's the biggest one for discussion. I think the rest of them, we can kind of have it on the agenda and then we can ask questions if we need to, rather than formal presentations on every article where they're gonna happen at AdCom, is my thought. Do we want to have the citizens petitions come in? Or, I mean, I'm fine with them going to AdCom and, and having AdCom vetted and watch those there as well. But just wanted to get the board's thoughts, make sure everyone agrees with that, so that when we move forward, it'll be a little bit more smooth going into spring town meetings. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Is AdCom, are they gonna continue to televise, like?
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
That's what I'm saying, they have not changed it.
I know they kind of went away from it then back with the, you know.
They have not indicated a change in that, Stephanie, so I don't know if their, their plan is to change it up now since things have sort of lightened up. But I, I think they're getting used to meeting online like that, so. But I have not heard an indication at all from Paul that they're gonna change it at this point.
Said that, if it's still being televised, I'm okay with watching the citizens input part of it. If for any reason it changes, I'd like to see those.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed. And then the planning ones, I think we leave those to the planning board. They have their process, they have their planning, their, their public hearings, their meetings are televised. So I think that we're good on those. And then we'll just have to see if there's any others, I can't remember off the top of my head if there's any, like.
Well, there's the billboard thing too.
Yeah, the billboard one too. We had a kind of a semi-presentation. But I think that, to me, that one can kind of just be with all the others. And if there's any questions, we can, we can talk about those that night. So to me, the marijuana one is the one that has, that warrants the biggest discussion.
I think, I would say, what do we have, two, two citizens ones?
Three.
Three. I think it might be a good idea to have them come before us, because if those are the ones that people, and if people don't, not that everybody's watching our meeting either, but it, it would give people two chances to hear about them, what they're about. Otherwise, there's gonna be big discussion on those, on, on, on town meeting floor too. I mean, if the people who are presenting them, if they don't mind coming, coming before us, I think it's, you know, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I did, after, after the fall, I did have a quick conversation with Frank. He rarely thinks we should be taking, you know, a stand on all the articles, to be honest with you. I mean, because it's almost like we're, we're, it's only a recommendation too. It's not a, you know, it's not.
For which ones, Stephanie?
Just, well, last year, it was a little confusing, we were picking and choosing which ones we were gonna vote on.
Well, we did the board of selectmen sponsored ones, and I thought that's where we were. Like, I don't, I don't know. I don't want to take a stance on planning board articles that they're sponsoring or bringing forward, or the, the water department. That's, that's my, that, that's where I, I'm at.
Sort of what we've done the last few years.
Yeah, I, I like the board of sponsored ones for sure.
And, and citizens input.
Yeah.
Or citizens petitions.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean, Frank disagreed. Frank kind of thought that, I mean, he's not running our board by any means, but it's, it's, you know, um.
He's never, he's never mentioned anything to me, so that, that's something that I have not heard that there's.
Well, he, he has said it in the past that he thought, he thinks that the board should take positions on all articles, but it's, it's entirely up to you.
Oh, and, and for me, I think, I think, I was almost like, I just didn't like the picking and choosing.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, I thought that we had, that we were good with the board of selectmen and the citizens input, and that we had put that to bed, but if we haven't.
Oh, no, no, I just, like I, like I said, I, I, I thought there were, there was some discussion about some planning ones or discussion here. If we're going to discuss them, why, why not, or, or have an opinion about them, why, why not just, you know, it's either recommended or not recommended, you know? I mean, I, I, yeah, it's just, it's not, it's, you know, I, I just, it just seems like, you know, a town meeting, we're, we're recommending a budget. I mean, I mean, what it comes down to, it's always going to be what, what's going on at town meeting floor, but it, you know, you know, um, we are the policy board. It just, you know, I didn't, I just thought it's a nice idea for people to know where, where this board stands on, on some of them, you know? I mean, or, well, I shouldn't say some of them. I'm, I'm going right against what I just said. Like, I kind of almost feel like.
Always.
Yeah, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I see it as like, the planning board, the board of water and sewer, like, they don't report into us, like, they are their own boards that have their own, like, I don't, I almost don't want to step on their toes on those, so that's why. And I have talked to, like, Kevin on planning.
But you know what? Last spring, we sat up here and we went, articles one through whatever, and, and we voted as, as a, as a whole warrant article. We didn't pick and choose. There were planning boards, there were.
Well, I, I honestly, I think that that was almost like, we beat it to death, that like, we had to do something to move forward. I don't remember exactly off the top of my head where it was, but we went around and around and around on it, that I, I think we're, I think we're trying to, you know, pave a path forward, and that's exactly why we have this on here to get agreement.
Oh, that's fine, but for, for me, I just want to be consistent about it. We took an entire warrant and singled out one article that we didn't, that was a citizens one that we didn't agree with, and we, we recommended, you know, we sat here and we went, okay, one through twenty-six, except number twenty-five. We, so we, we, we recommended entire warrant. So, for, for me, I just want us to do, to be consistent. Either we're, we're, either we're gonna or we're not. Not, not to pick and choose when we're gonna, you know, say, say we're going to recommend a whole warrant. Because that warrant had planning, had all different articles on it.
Well, we do have to vote on the warrant, to accept the warrant. I think you're confusing the two things.
Yes, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
We have to.
No, 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 it wasn't the warrant. It was we were recommending all the articles except one. We pulled one citizen's petition out and said we didn't recommend that one. It wa- wasn't the warrant, it was, so that's why I was confused then when we moved to the fall. We decided we were only going to vote to.
Oh, so you're going back to spring, not, not the fall?
Well, well, that's when I brought it up in the fall, because we had done it in the spring.
So are you saying we voted, we took positions on everything in the fall?
No.
In the spring.
In the spring.
In the spring, okay, I thought you were saying fall, because I was like, I don't remember it like that.
No, no, no. That's why I questioned it in the fall.
So I think that we, we questioned it in the fall, we talked a lot about it, we had a process that we agreed going forward. I think that's where we are for this one. We can always keep going back and talking about what we did, you know, a year ago, two years ago, five years ago, but I think we really spent a lot of time talking about this in the fall, and then I, I think we're bringing this forward to see if we're still in agreement there. But I still feel like we go around and round on this a little bit.
Because I, I think what happened last, um, spring, we tried to clarify in the fall that this is what we'd like to see going forward. Approve ours, approve citizens petitions.
Under a position.
So if we stay there, I, I think that, I think that's why I'm asking, because, because I just wasn't, and, and then because of that, I, I just happened to reach out to Frank, and I said, jeez, is this, you know, because I felt like I had seen in the past, before I was on the board, just watching, and I had seen the board vote on.
Well, I guess there's going to be different boards, there's going to be different chairs, so the way I've done this chair now is, is consistent, and what I want to make sure we all agree on, that I don't want to just make a decision, I want to make sure we talk about it.
Well, well, that's the thing. If we're consistent, but in, in honest, for me, we shouldn't be saying it all depends on what board. Either the board of selectmen is going to do it this way or not. It shouldn't, we shouldn't, from year to year, because we're always going to have different people.
Well, not always. So, just to, so last, in the fall, we did board of selectmen and citizens input. For the spring, we're saying board of selectmen and citizens input. So I feel like we've taken all these discussions and made a decision about a consistent approach, and now, for the next town meeting, are following that approach.
Okay, and what I just wanted to add that was that the moderator thought that maybe that wasn't the right approach. And, and I'm not saying he, we're going to make that decision. I'm not saying, I just wanted to add on, that he thought it was a little strange that we weren't, um, you know, going ahead with, and, and making a recommendation on all of them. So it, so it's, and, and so I just wanted to bring that up.
I talked to Kevin on planning.
There's no dialogue.
No, there's no dialogue, no.
No, no, but, no, but it, it would be good for the board of selectmen to be consistent.
And that's what we're trying to do.
And that's what we're doing for the second meeting in a row.
To do now.
That's fine, but, but then you're saying, you, as chair, you've decided to do this.
No, we, we have, no, I don't think, I think we have.
You, you're missing my point.
No, no, no.
If this is how the board is going to continue to do it, I don't have any problem with that. But when you guys say, I think, other boards and this, or whatever, I think the board of selectmen should be consistent. If, if that's what we're going to do, then that's fine.
But it could change.
I can't, I don't know what they're going to do five years from now, Steph.
Right, or, or two years from now. There could be an entirely, there could be five people in the board that agree with, we should vote on everyone.
But our intention right now is to keep it consistent and to move that.
I'll just, I'll just give you an observation. I've been here probably the longest of anybody, right? It's been inconsistent the whole time.
Yeah.
And, and the reason why that is, Steph, is because you have different people. And so you're going to have a new member in, in just a few weeks.
And different articles.
And so you may have, you may think differently about it, that, so it's okay, it's okay for the board to revisit that question every single year if you want. You can, you can, you can change it. Your, it's your call, exclusively your call.
Yeah, I'm not as worried about, I guess, being consistent with how something was done three years ago. You know, we're sitting here, we talked about it a lot in the fall, we're talking about it tonight, and I think we have a plan.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, it was done differently in the other towns that were too. It's, it's not consistent.
Can I come full circle? Um, the way you started with citizens petitions, even though if, if they're televised, I'd watch it, I have no problem bringing them in, too. I mean, if you think it would help the community seeing it twice, absolutely.
Yeah. Well, and you know what? If we've decided that we're going to make a recommendation, then they should come before us. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be.
Well, it is, it is posted, so we can, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I, I guess I'm going to watch Adcom. Do, do I want to sit through the same presentation twice? Do, you know, Seth's shaking his head.
It's redundant.
I, I, I think so too, even to make them come out, I don't, you know, if it's televised, if they felt passionately about coming in, sure, but I don't.
Well, well, here's the thing. Uh, Wednesday nights for me, a lot of times I work, or that's the night we pick up hardly. So I'm trying to catch up with Adcom months. If you're going to ask me to make a, make a decision, I want them in front of here. Because I can't hundred percent say that I'm going to which night, I'm trying to catch up on them. Now, what night their meeting coming for Adcom, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Are they, are they Wednesday? Do you know if they ended up on Wednesday?
They haven't, they haven't had any success in getting a hold of the folks that.
So I mean, look at how Adcom's even having trouble scheduling them. So we need all these citizens, you know, to come in. I think let's, let's try, and let's hope it's at the beginning of the, the schedule, which will give us a lot of time, you know, before it comes to us. Um, but I know, you know, I have the same challenges too. Work full-time, and my mom, you know.
Yeah.
Sometimes I put it on the car when I'm driving around, you know, we all, even if you go to that section of the meeting or whatever, so I, I would prefer to not be redundant if we can, um, but maybe we play it by ear where it falls in the discussion. Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
For an ex-advisory chairperson. Uh, had a call from a constituent today. At the advisory committee, can a citizen talk?
A citizen is allowed to talk, but it's at the discretion of the, of the chairperson. It's not, it's, it's an, it's a public meeting, but it's not an open meeting for people to just.
Just like us too. Like, they have the discretion if we can ask questions or we participate as well.
Yeah.
The chair doesn't have to allow anybody to speak during a meeting unless they, unless they, they deem so.
Right. So generally, I mean, in my time, if people had input, they were welcome to speak, and they made their point, and then we said, okay, is that, is that your point? And then that was it, you know, so.
But another chair might say, no.
They have the, yeah, the discretion, the discretion to do that.
Okay.
Just like our meetings, you know, I guess, you know, kind of like our meetings.
It's generally true.
They wanted to talk at an agenda, you know, I, um.
Even, even a public hearing, you can actually set the, the, the order which people can speak, and, and how many times, they're allowed, they're allowed to.
And in, in the citizen input policy that, that you voted and approved, it's up on the website and you, and you talk about that. You know, what the chair can do, that the chair really does control that meeting and can allow somebody, and if they get out of line or go too, go too long, the, the chair can decide to, to cut them off, or allow them to speak or not.
Sure.
In, in any of the boards, commissions, or, or committees.
But I think culturally, we've been pretty, you know, all the boards and committees have been pretty good about.
Yeah, I've always, every, any year that I did Adcom, citizens were allowed and, and it was appreciated if they had input to.
Right, appreciated.
Bring it to, bring it to, yeah.
Yeah, I did, I did watch one meeting that Paul didn't, as someone wanted to speak, and Paul didn't allow him, and I was, I was kind of surprised only because I felt like my time on there, um, most of the chairs were, um, you know, if, you know, someone might raise their hand, they, they might have, we might have been having a question, talking about, and someone else had the answer. So it was, it was nice, but, um, I guess like, like Seth said, it was, it's up to, up to, up to the chair, whether he wants to let them or not.
Okay. All right, um, the last one, Steph, you had asked us to put on, and I think all of us have probably, at least I watched Adcom, I assume you watched Adcom. You know, there's been a number of presentations recently, so I know you had some, some questions.
Yeah, um, so in, in, unfortunately, um, when Bill reached out to me, I was, uh, heading out the door to work. I think, I think one day he reached, tried to reach me, I was at work, the next day I was heading out, so, and I told him that there wasn't anything, um, like crazy that I thought that he wouldn't be able to answer. So, um, you know, I was just going through the book, and, um, I guess a couple of questions I had, and, um, and like I said, I haven't caught up on all my Adcom yet, so, um, I just figured, you know, if I had a question, maybe somebody here might have, might have the same question, or might have the answer, if you guys saw the answer on Adcom. So, I guess a couple of questions I had as I was looking through, um, and I was, as I went back, I kind of was able to, um, see that, uh, Chris had mentioned, I think I had a, um, a thought that maybe Bill had mentioned it once too. I was looking for the, um, where the, um, gas line was. I knew, I knew that we were going to pull, uh, just have one line for gasoline instead of it being with each.
Oh, not like an underground gas line?
Oh, yeah, no, no, gasoline.
What gas line are we pulling? Okay.
And, um, so I was looking and I couldn't find it. I kept looking, and then finally, I, finally, I saw that, yeah, that it was, um,
On the facilities.
It was under the, the municipal buildings, right, not, not, I was, I was like, maybe it's with DPW. So the only thing I was kind of curious, and, um, it, um, and I did figure I would see water, with water, just because they're their own entity, but I don't see underwater, there's a zero.
Yeah, so they put their, their, their gases under there too. We kept it all.
Oh, that's good, okay. Because I think in the book says theirs is going to be snow and ice, is going to be with snow and ice, and it said, uh, the water department was going to be with water, but I could, I couldn't, I found snow and ice.
I'm virtually certain that it was put under the central account, just with everybody else.
Yeah. But you know, like, you know how, um, you know, Marie did a great job on the book, like, you know, at the beginning, where it highlights and it says, you know, all the descriptions. It, it said, um, gas will all be under there except snow and ice and water, but I couldn't find, the water still has a zero for gas, so maybe.
We'll, we'll, we'll go check that to make sure.
Um.
Yeah, to make sure.
Uh, let's see, what else? Um, just, I was kind of curious, um, where, where the stand was with the, um, the library position.
The youth coordinator? The youth one?
Yeah. Just, just, just was kind of curious where, you know, I know we kind of gave you.
The part time, yeah.
Young adult library.
Yeah, I know we told you no new positions, and then I think, I just hadn't got a chance to see, see the, uh, presentation yet. I was kind of curious how, how that went.
Actually, it, they, the, the advisory committee seemed very supportive of it, actually, because they identified that as, well, first of all, the committee did a pretty good job of explaining it as to why it was so important to them, and that they've been trying, they actually, I actually supported it in the budget two years ago, and then had to remove it because of the, because of COVID, but, um, so they, and then I said to them, I'm sure, again, no new positions, and they came back to me and said, well, if we reduce other areas of our budget, would you consider? I said, well, I'll certainly look at it, and they did. They, they brought it back and they made a pretty compelling presentation as to why they needed it, and that, um, uh, and they, it was for a program that they actually have space in the building for, but they don't have a person to run it.
And if you watch the, um, library board of trustee meeting, I forget what the date is, but it's right before Manny leaves. It's, it's the last one that he's on, so probably mid to early January. They are, the library board of trustees also talk about it on that meeting as well. That gives a little bit of context and kind of how they got there and, and all that as well.
They make a pretty compelling, they make a pretty compelling argument for it. They really do.
No, and, and I'll, I'll go back and watch. I mean, I mean, for me, I think I said this here, um, you know, before, I mean, I kind of felt, and this is, I'm not picking on library by any means, but I'm kind of like, no new positions is no new positions, and the fact that you can find other places to cut, you should find the cuts. Like, I don't feel like you should find the cuts because you want a position, you know, so I just, you know, um, of course, that'll be decided on town meeting floor. Um, I just was kind of curious where, what direction that, that had, had gone in. Um, let's see.
At least the read I had was that the, the, the committee seemed very supportive of it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I, I just, for me, I'm just going with the direction that we had given you.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, of course, Adcom can, you know, they can see it however the way they want it. Um, I just, I just didn't feel like, if you find money to cut, you should find the money to cut. Like, I, I just didn't feel like that should be the reason to go ahead and, and bring on a, a new position when we kind of wanted to, um, and like I said, I, for me, it didn't matter if it was a library, who it was, it was just no new positions. Okay, and, um, da, da, da. Oh, are you, um, are, are you going to, is, are you going to be having a discussion about free cash? Like I had seen.
Yes.
Paul, do, do you know when you, when you, which, which one day you guys are going to do that, or?
Probably the next one, if I'm not mistaken.
So not tomorrow, a week, a week from tomorrow? I just want to kind of make sure.
He, he has not gotten bad to me when he wants to do that.
Okay, all right.
You know, so we'll talk about, yeah.
Maybe I'll even reach out to him, or maybe if you, if you think about it, maybe just give me an idea. I just want to make sure I catch that one, so I can, can, you know, instead of asking you to do it here, I want to make sure I, I, I can, uh, you know, hear that presentation. Uh, let's see, what else was I, um?
While you're looking at that too, Bill, do you have dates, just as Steph is saying, you know, it made me think, to talk to the senior center and to do the, the one on cable access as well?
We typically do that in April.
Right, so just making sure it's on the calendar, we don't lose sight, we get it scheduled.
Yeah, we, we always do it in April.
You know, we advertise it ahead of time, so everyone can tune in, okay?
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, uh, da, 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 da. So, and, and so this question actually now, now that I'm thinking about it, might not be for, um, open session. Um, when we, so I was wondering, like, what are we, where are we really going to be with unsettled contracts? You know, numbers wise, but now I'm wondering if, well, we can't really do that until they're, like.
Well, you, you talk about the funding of it, so, so we've actually put money in the budget from, from a separate, from the, from the, um, the reserve, the salary reserve line.
Okay.
For the settled contracts, so.
So is that in here?
That's in there. That's in, that's in, that's actually in the budget.
Okay, so it's in a reserve line?
So it is, it is different than we've done in previous years where we would transfer it in. This is a much cleaner way, actually, recall that Marie actually changed that process.
That is of last year though, yeah, that was as of last year, so this is year two.
So it's a, it's a much cleaner way. That way, the whole budget is clear for the beginning as to what it is.
Yeah, because we can't really know that number until the contracts.
Exactly right, yeah. So we don't know, we, you know, we just, we just estimate and then we'll see where it goes from there.
Yeah, okay. And the one, I think I only have one other one. Oh, so. Oh, so I know, um, you guys talked a little bit about the reorganization, um, and I did, when I talked to you quickly today, I did, um, I did, um, realize, so if we're not seeing, um, a percentage number next to a position, then we can assume that they're at top, they're at top steps.
Right.
And then you, you, we can't put a number in there until the contract settles.
Exactly right.
Because that's where the COLA will come from.
Right.
All right, so.
And the same thing holds true for anybody who may be getting an increase because of their new position, their new role. Okay, so that would be probably Mark Craig's position and, and Paige's position.
Okay.
So that will come out of that same line.
All right, so why I was asking, because while, while we're gonna reorganize, so I was just kinda wondering, what's the cost gonna be to the town? So I know you're saying you can't give me a number.
Yeah, I don't know at this point.
But, but, so my question is, why the reorganization then? Like, so, um, don't take this the wrong way, but these people all answered to you. And, you know, we're paying you to do that. So now, so we have to, to reorganize and now spend more money for somebody else to oversee them? You know what I'm saying?
The, the difference is, is that the, the, these individual departments are still gonna, are gonna report to a different, to one department heads in a division. There'll be division heads instead of department heads, okay? But their role's still gonna be important. The reason why we did it, because from an organizational perspective, these are departments more often than not are ones that, that don't get to report to us on a more regular basis. All right, so for instance, recreation, for instance, or, or, or veterans, um, you know, library doesn't always meet, you know, doesn't meet with a regular basis, but, but the, but the, you know, conservation on a regular basis. So by putting conservation and building underneath planning, first of all, they all work together anyways. This, it makes, it, it actually makes sure, cause they're gonna meet now within amongst themselves and they'll be actually keeping in touch with each other about how they can get that stuff done. And so I do think that organizationally, it's a much more cleaner organization by doing this. This is a, a same format that's being done all around the state right now. And I, I will tell you that from my perspective, it allows me to keep the organization neat and lot, neater and cleaner and obviously, actually more functional. So I will tell you that, um, that the cost, the incre, its cost is incremental. It's, it's very, it's an incremental cost, which I think is well worth the, in the investment to make it work, uh, for the, for the organization overall. And these, and these are people that are very talented folks, that are, that are gonna be, you know, that, that actually, you know, quite honestly, are, are looking for, you know, a way to, to, to take on more responsibility. And I think that's, that's an important piece of that, too.
Okay, well, see, without you giving, you know, being able to give an idea, I just don't, you know, I mean, you know how I've been running about trying to stay lean and, you know, we're coming off. And so for me, we're adding money to the budget. I, I, I get it. Fundamentally, I absolutely get what you're saying.
Yeah, I, actually we're not, though, because if you take a look at, you know, some positions changed, the net impact is gonna be virtually nothing.
Will we have a save on benefit and pension in some?
No, what's happened is that we've had other positions backfill in other positions, so some people are leaving and other people are coming in at a lower number. So the over, the overall net impact is negligible.
Yeah, but that, that lower number finds its way up pretty quick, pretty quickly, too.
Over time it will, absolutely, the whole organization does that.
I'm, I'm not for better organization, yet, but, but the problem is, so, you know, we have a town manager that we've paid a certain amount of money and, and you've overseen this, and now we're gonna pass that off, it means having to pay more money. Um, you know, I, I don't know, may, maybe, you know, especially where, where you're heading out, maybe it would've been better to let, let a new town manager come in and, you know, I, I don't disagree with, with the organization part of it. You, you know, I mean, you've been listening to me for four years, Bill. I'm about, you know, I'm about trying to keep, keep the spending down and, you know, and, 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 and in check with people in town. So this is no different, please don't take any offense to any of this.
No, no, no.
It's no different than I've been for, you know.
But I think it's important that you understand, though, that when I said to you, I would try and give you a very lean budget, I've done that. And so irrespective of what the thought is here, that even the money that's gonna be in that fund is included in that fund for those changes. So the budget number, the bottom line budget's not gonna change even with those changes, even with, even with the budget, the, uh, salary changes. So it's still gonna, still the same, the same number coming in. So it's not, I'm not gonna like, come in and then say after the contract's settled, we're gonna say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna increase that number. The number's still within that reserve amount.
Well, in the contract, is, is, is the, what you're gonna pay those positions necessarily have to wait for the contract?
Yes, because they're both union positions.
Okay, all three?
All three.
Okay.
Actually, two, it's just two.
Well, then the, the, or, the, the.
Well, the, all three are, in each division, all three divisions in each department are, are, are actually all in the union as well. But the director's position in both cases will, is in the union, so I have to wait for that, that contract.
Well, cause, cause I was thinking, if you're changing the, what those positions pay, wouldn't that just be in the, um?
No, it's, it's a negotiated impact.
Okay, okay.
So I, that's why I can't tell you what the number is.
No, I, yeah, I get that. I, I was thinking more to the COLA part of it, if you're, you know, if you're changing the, the pay of what a position pays, not necessar, you know what I'm saying? I'm not talking about what the raise per se is gonna be. You're actually changing what a certain position pays now, cause that's, that's become a new position.
Could I, can I give an example of a, of a reorganization, um, and what I think is a success story over time? So when I joined this organization, um, there was a, there was a highway department, there was, you know, um, that was all separate. There was water, there was, those, those organizations weren't necessarily, they were near each other. But, you know, you know, I think folks who've been here for a while will remember, uh, when we would go around and, and pave a road and then a couple of years down the road, we'd, we'd rip it up to put new water lines down it. That's because, um, those folks weren't working closely enough and organized well enough to be planning their work now. You will never see work now where we pave and then rip up roads, because everyone is under the DPW director. So water superintendent is under the DPW director, town engineer is under, so it's, it's organized, it's, it's, it's well planned. And the, the one person that's really the direct report to the town manager is the DPW director. Everyone else reports, uh, through the DPW director. So if you look at human services, um, you take Mark Craig, that would be your human services director. That's the one person that's reporting to the town manager. And then you've got recreation division director, veteran services division director. Those are, those are, um, all services that are aligned, moving in the same direction. But we don't necessarily have them organized in a fashion that they're working together. They overlap some, but there, there are opportunities down the road where, when I think about like administrative services that could support two different organizations, but when they're broken apart separately, you have to provide administrative support to, to all three.
That's right.
So down, these are some of the things that down the road, you can have savings, efficiencies and better service. But you don't always realize those efficiencies right away. And I think same thing on, when you look at the, the other one with, with planning, conservation and, and building inspections. Um, I think, I think you have to think a little further down the road to what is the better service provided? Um, where do you have overlap that you could be, uh, creating efficiencies down the road? That's just my observation.
And I think the last thing I had was, it was more an observation, um, I mean, last week was the first time I really got to sit down and just like, look at the budget book from, from cover to cover. Um, I was a little bit surprised that, um, where we were, where we were popping in with, um, with our, um, that we were on the lower end, I kinda put, put it down as a comment. We're on the low end of free cash, but the high end of our tax rates based on, um, which is something that, um, kudos to Marie again, because the, the information that comes in this book is so much more than, um, you know, than what it used to be. But it was, I was just kinda surprised to see that, um, that we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight towns, surrounding towns, with more certified free cash than we do, but yet our tax rate is higher. And, um, so I don't know, I was, I guess it was just a observation that, um, I was a little, little surprised.
So I'll, I'll try and, I, I won't address the tax rate.
Yeah, we don't have to.
The tax rate is what it is, but, but in certain terms, the free cash, we were impacted more than those other communities because of our, because of how volatile our, our finances can be with the stadium revenues. Uh, stadium revenues as well as, um, you know, uh, the meal stacks and the hotel, hotel tax, they impacted us far more significantly than most communities around us.
Yeah, I don't know, I guess, well, I guess may, and listen, we all do that, you, you, you know, after, you, you, you see a certain amount of money, you know. I just kinda feel like we really shouldn't be going much over the, um, the guarantee, because that, that, I think that might've gotten us in trouble. Because we, you know, no, no one, believe me, no one saw COVID coming, but it's, if we, you, you count on something, you count on something and then it's not there, I think if, we would be better off that we're really just using that guarantee number. And then what comes in above that, then maybe that's where you have more free cash to use for capital projects and instead of getting, getting our budget to rely on those funds and then all of a sudden they're not there.
So going back to the Randy methodology is what you're saying, just make sure I'm following?
A little bit, a little, little, a, a little bit. It's just, well, you know, I mean, obviously, so Bill's giving me the excuse why the free cash is, is going down. So like, I, I, I would blame myself if that, if this was my budget. I, I, I mean, my, this blaming this budget, my own home budget, if I said, hey, you know, I mean, I work for tips, so my money's different every day. But if I said, hey, I always make $200 a night, and then all of a sudden I have a whole week where I make $50 a night, but I've been spending for $200 a night, then I would blame myself to say, okay, well, Stephanie, you, you really shouldn't count on something that's not a given. That, that's all my, my, my question. I was just a little surprised where we were with, um, you know, with other communities and then, you know, looking at, you know, where our tax rate is to other communities and, and, uh, we don't have to have a big discussion about that, because we had them in front of us and we talked about it and, you know, um, I for one, I'll, I'll admit, I've listened to, to, uh, to about the tax rates for three years in ADCOM, a year here. I, you know, I, it, it doesn't flow as quick for me in, in my mind, so I'm not, um, I, I, you know, myself, I wish I had picked up on it myself before. I just happened to, as I was really trying to read this book and take in a lot of the information that was here and I kinda looked and I said, oh my God, I'm like, compared to other communities, where, where are we? So, um.
So it's important to keep this in perspective, okay? First of all, it's not an excuse, it's reality, okay? So let me just say that if you have a situation where suddenly nobody predicted that's what's gonna happen to, uh, our, our community and nobody predicted that the stadium's gonna be shut down, right? So it was difficult for us to maintain services otherwise. Nobody wants to see your services go down, right? So that's not the same type of ex, of example that you just gave. Everybody wants those services to continue regardless of where that money comes from. So we kept the money going. The issue is that now, now when the money starts to come back, which is gonna happen in the next year, we're still taking a conservative view going into next year to help rebuild that free cash position, okay? So there's a plan to, to try and restore that. So it's not just we continue to spend at that level. That's why I've given you conservative budgets for the past few years for that very same reason. So, so is, is, there is a plan to that and it's not, it, it may not be readily visible to some, to some people, but it is a plan to doing it, so it is managing the overall finances of the town, so we don't get into a situation where we run out of money. That's clearly not the plan. We, the plan is to, we had to dip into our reserves for a year. Then the federal government came to, to help rescue us a little bit, that's a good thing. That's why we're not gonna try and use much free cash in the, in the, in the capital plan for this year, to try again, rebuild that, use that money for what it was intended for, for to help, to help address those, those, those things. So I just want you to be aware that it's not, it's done very strategically, it's very done with, with a lot of thought that goes into that process. Because clearly, I don't wanna be the guy that's sitting here when, when, when the budget goes dry. Never one of my, never, never happened in my life, wasn't about to start now in this, in this regard.
Doc, did you have something that you were gonna say?
Well, yeah, we, I, I don't wanna beat a dead horse per se, but, you know, I, I think the plan of, of, of Bill and his, his, um, staff is to be able to save that free cash money. I mean, how quickly we forget that $4 million went to the borough school. I mean, that's a ton of money that went, that was put aside, free cash, that was saved for excess money that we had a couple of good years down at the stadium, it wasn't, um, spent frivolously. We were able to put a good chunk of money down on that borough school project. A year later, two years later, we get hit with COVID, but we, we took a punch, but we stood. You know, I, I think we did a good job and now, as Bill said a couple of times, um, the plan is to build free cash back up again. Not use free cash, try to come up with creative ways with, with COVID money, um, to buy other things that we need in the town without using free cash and knowing hopefully, you know, we've got football games and concerts already scheduled coming forward, that we're gonna be able to put that, those funds into free cash and get it back up.
And there's a lot of, lot of events coming up this year, so it's gonna, it's gonna help.
Have we heard from the crowds at all about, I know a while back, you know, they told us, you know, the concerts are gonna happen and they were in talks. So, but have we heard again?
They have not spoken to me in a while about specific, but, but you can see that if you take a look, and I've talked, I talked to the, the police chief and fire chief, because they, they're planning for these events. And they, they've indicated there's, there's like 50 some events this year. There's actually more soccer games this year, because.
The first one's Saturday.
Yeah, so they, they actually have, because they're part of the premier league now, because they, they were in the final group, grouping of the entire league last year, so they're gonna play extra games because of that. But I do think, um, that, you know, we, there are at least six, seven concerts planned for this year. There is another, uh, the first one of which is coming up in May, which is actually helpful for this fiscal year. So that's, that's actually good news. But I do think that, um, you know, it's, we have to think about these things. And, and you're quite honestly, with, if we, if we took the position that, okay, we're just gonna cut, cut during a pandemic, when people needed us the most, that would've been, I think reckless if you did that. So I, I think people here in the community appreciate the fact that we were there for them when they needed us. And I do think that we took the right approach to manage the money as best we could and then be in a position where we can start rebuilding and tell people, look, we're gonna hold off. I, I said no to a bunch of people saying, I need more this year. And people looked at me, I think even some of the ADCOMers looked at me sideways at the meetings recently and said, look, what are you doing? Listen, we, we need to rebuild our position here. And, and until we do, I'm not gonna say yes to, to that kind of a, a request.
So with that, are we good to move on from this one? Do you have any more questions? Okay, all right. Um, so I think we're just on to action items, unless is there anything else for selectmen's update that anyone, anyone has?
Motion to approve the February 1st, 2022 Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to appoint Maria Schuster to the Design Review Board for a term to end May 31st, 2022.
Second. Um, just to under further discussion, we are still seeking one more member that's appointed by our board. So, um, when Paige is back next week, I'm gonna have her send out a note. But the last one we're looking for is a merchant or property owner in the Design Review District, which is the, the Uptown District. So, um, it also requests for someone to be an engineer or architect, and it looks like Ms. Ms. Schuster does fit that piece. Um, and I believe I saw an application, she grew up uptown in the historical district as well, which is nice. So there's a lot of specifics to this board, so it's nice to check off one of those criterias in the bylaw with her. So, um, I think she's new to boards and committees, so it's always exciting to see a new name on these and just know that we're seeking one more.
Why is it for three months only?
Uh, cause Gordon Green passed away.
So she'll be up for appointment again in three months?
Yes, yes, so Mr. Green was that, that seat and, and he passed away recently, so she's fulfilling that one.
I didn't even know that.
Yeah.
When did that happen, was that recently?
Uh, yeah, uh, a few months, yeah.
I've never even heard that.
October. Yeah, it was, yeah.
Wow, I didn't know that.
They did a, a very private family.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, it was kinda Omnicron, Omnicron time, right?
Yeah.
Just prior, I think.
Yeah, I prefer it was in that time period. That's too bad, I didn't realize that.
Um, I heard it on planning, I think Planning Board mentioned it, so, um, that, that's why it's, it's that short piece and I imagine she'll continue on, as long as no one scares her away right away, so. All right, so we've had further discussion, all those in favor? All right, and then the last item.
Motion to accept donation from Schneider Electric Company of two metal coat racks. Motion to accept donation from Schneider Electric Company of two metal coat racks, one metal binder rack with dividers, one office chair, one plastic cart, and one board to the Foxborough Police Department.
And this isn't one of these ones that you can just, we're very grateful for it, but you know, of all the strong town manager act, it seems like you can, can't accept the binder.
No, because it's a gift, the board has to accept it, so. So, I will tell you too, that we are gonna meet with them tomorrow. They are, as you know, emptying out their, their facility on the pontiff. So, and there's a lot of some really good equipment, and they've offered to present, allow some of our departments to go in and take things that, you know, that they think will be useful. So, we'll pick a list of everything and then bring it back to you.
And no impacts to the parking lot yet, right?
No, no.
Just because the, the race seems to be impacted by it, which I was kind of surprised about? They, they couldn't do the start and the end there in the, in the Grove like usual? Um, she had, she had mentioned that they have to reorganize?
That surprised me, I wasn't aware of it.
So, just, you know, maybe when you do meet with them, if you can find out if there's any other impacts, just since the Bailey's run had mentioned that they're not able to. That start and finish line affects a lot of.
Yeah, I don't, maybe it is part of that, part of that, but they, it actually, as luck would have it, one of our 65 inch screens on the, on the outside of this office went down recently, and they have an extra one. So, they're gonna give it to us to, to replace it, so, so it was, was really helpful.
Great. All right, so we've had a motion, we've had discussion, all those in favor?
That might be, because you talked about the registration, they use the building for registration, maybe it's not.
The white building, the little white low building?
Maybe it's not just the, maybe it's not just the park.
I was just thinking the parking lot, but it might be the building, yeah. So, Bill, if you can find out, I'd just be, I'd be curious.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be, I'll be over there tomorrow.
And you know what, the food pantry had to move out there, so that does make a little, that does make sense.
I'm sure that's what it is, because we used to do the registration and all that stuff, beginning and end, right at the cafeteria building.
Right, right.
That's maybe what it is.
I hadn't thought of that, good idea. All right, so I think just one last motion, Seth, to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? All right, thanks, good night, everyone, we'll see you in two weeks.